Good evening. Township of Precipity Troy Hills. Annual Organization Meeting of the Township Council, January 7th, 2025. Introduction posting of notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing a notice in the office of the Township Clerk, and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 2nd, 2024, which remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and New York Star-Ledger on December 6th, 2024. May I please ask everyone to stand up for the flag salute?
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Musella.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Okay, also in attendance are Mayor James Barberio, Business Administrator Jamie Cryon, Municipal Attorney Michael Lavery, and Municipal Clerk Colette Madden, Council President. We have a quorum. May I begin?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, January 7th, 2024 at 7:00 PM is the Agenda Meeting. January 21st, 2024 at 7:00 PM is the Regular Meeting. Moving along to appointments at this time, Committees and Boards, I'll turn it over to you, Council President.
Okay, thank you. For Board of Election, Council Liaison, Mr. Neglia. Craftsman Farms Foundation, Councilman Musella. Economic Development Advisory Committee, Council Liaison, Councilman McGrath. And then, we have for Member Two-Year Term. Make a motion for Mr. Robert Paluso.
They don't, Council President, if I may interject. For these appointments, motion and seconds are not required at this point, so you can just appoint.
Okay. So, Mr. Robert Paluso. Mr. Magarath Mahida. And Mr. Ravaram Matapati.
Mr. Karifi, you're gonna have those names for me later?
Yes. Next will be the Emergency Services Council Liaison, to be myself. Then the Environmental Advisory Committee Council Liaison will be Councilwoman Hernandez. And for the Environmental Committee. For reappointment will be Tamara Jolly and Susan Lynn Pearson. Moving on to the Finance Committee will be myself and Councilman Neglia. The Fire Prevention Bureau will be myself. The Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, Councilman Musella. And we have two terms for reappointment is Vincenzo Farrar and Barbara Seaman. Library Board of Trustees, Council Liaison, Councilman Neglia. Vice President Neglia. Morris County League of Municipalities, Councilman Musella. Municipal Government Transparency Committee, Councilman McGrath, be the Council Liaison. We have for the Members, the One-Year Terms will be John Beeler, David Kaplan, Chris Mazzarella, Robert Quinn, and Raymond Santana. Open Space Committee, Member Three-Year Term, Len Sipkins. Precipity Area Chamber of Commerce. Representative, Mr. McGrath, Councilman McGrath. Precipity Child Daycare, Councilwoman Hernandez.
Council President.
Yes.
For the upcoming Planning Board Appointment.
Yes.
So that is going to require a motion, a second, and an actual vote, and just for the Members and for the public. The reason that we're not requiring votes for the others and for that one is because all the other committees are advisory in nature and don't really affect the public, but the Planning Board and the Zoning Board are boards that make decisions that affect the public, so they require that, so.
I'd like to make a motion then for that Planning Board Position for Councilwoman Hernandez. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call. Well, Mr. Hernandez, you could vote for yourself.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, for the Police Athletic League, Council Vice President Neglia. For the Recreation Advisory Committee, Sandra Neglia. The Traffic Advisory Committee. The Councilwoman Hernandez will be the Council Liaison. We have for the Three-Year Terms Karen Blunt, Diana Cantrella, Robert Quinn, Raymond Santana, and Vincent Shindel. For the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Reappoint.
Need a motion. I need a motion for that.
Need a motion for these, okay. Make a motion to reappoint. For the first position would be Bernie Berkowitz, Bernard Berkowitz, second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And make a motion for the second position for reappointment, Davy Willens.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call. Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Colette, you gonna take it from here, or you want me to?
You got it, now I'll take it from here. Okay, Resolutions, R. 2025, one, Designation of Official Newspapers. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, two, Designation of Newspapers to Receive Notices, motion to approve, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, three, Authorizing the Township's Assessor to Take Certain Actions to Prosecute and Defend Tax Appeals, motion to approve, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, four, Granting Fee Exemptions in Connection with Permits for Construction, Zoning, Engineering, Fire Prevention, Health, Parks, and Forestry and Recreation Departments, motion to approve, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, five, Authorizing the Township Tax Collector to Charge a Penalty on Delinquent Taxes, Assessments, or Other Municipal Leans or Charges, motion to approve the above resolution, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, six, Authorizing the Township Tax Collector to Charge Interest on Delinquent Taxes, Assessments, or Other Municipal Leans or Charges, motion to approve the above resolution, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, seven, Cash Management Plan, motion to approve the above resolution, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, oh eight, To Establish Temporary Budget Appropriations for Calendar Year 2025, motion to approve, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, nine, Authorizing a Contract for Affordable Housing Administrative Agent Consultant Services, motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, ten, Authorizing a Contract for Architectural Services, motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R. 2025, eleven, Authorizing a Contract for Accounting and Auditing Services, motion to approve, please.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, twelve, Authorizing a Contract for Community Development Block Grant Consultant, motion to approve, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R. 2025, thirteen, Authorizing a Contract for Claims Administrator for Workers' Compensation, motion to approve, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, fourteen, Authorizing a Contract for Energy Agent and Procurement Consultant Services, motion to approve, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, fifteen, Authorizing Contracts for Financial Advisors, motion to approve, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez. Wait, who made that motion? Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia, right, okay. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, sixteen, Authorizing a Contract for Grants Consultant, motion to approve, please.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, seventeen, Authorizing a Contract for Insurance Broker of Record.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, eighteen, Authorizing Contracts for Professional Property Appraisal Services, motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, nineteen, Authorizing Contracts for Professional Planning Services, motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia? And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. R. 2025, twenty, Authorizing a Contract for Risk Management Consultant Services, motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, twenty-one, Authorizing Contracts for Tax Appeal Consultants, motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R. 2025, twenty-two, Authorizing a Contract for Website Design and Maintenance Consulting Services.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R. 2025, twenty-three, Authorizing a Contract for the Services of a Wellness Coach, motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R. 20, motion passes. R. 2025, twenty-four, Authorizing the Award of Contract for Professional Services to Michael Lavery of the Firm Lavery, Salvagia, Brahminus, and Cohen as Township Attorney for the Year 2025.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Lavery.
Thank you. You guys are still sitting next to me?
R. 2025, twenty-five, Authorizing the Appointment of Special Law Enforcement Officers.
Motion. Second.
Who made that motion?
Mr. McGrath.
Motion made by Mr. McGrath, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia? And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. R. 2025, twenty-six, Consent to the Appointment of Angelica Sabatini as a Director of Finance and Chief Financial Officer of the Township Precipity Troy Hills.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. At this time, there's a public session.
Before we move on, I just want to recognize some of the dignitaries that we have here, please, at our meeting tonight. We have Sheriff James Gannon. And our Commissioner, Tom Astrolangelo. And former Councilman Rob, Robert Paluso. Thank you. Go ahead, Colette, thank you.
Public session. This is for the public, you have five minutes to speak. Can I get a motion to open the public session?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. McGrath, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public. If you have something related to the regular agenda, Ken, then we'll just wait, because we're gonna start that, if that's okay. Thank you. Okay, seeing no one, can I get a motion to close the public here?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Can I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella? Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, so we are adjourned. Our Agenda Meeting will start at seven, seven o'clock sharp, thank you. Okay, Council Agenda, Township Precipity Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting, January 7th, 2025. Introduction, posting a notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing a notice in the office of the Township Clerk, and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 2nd, 2024, which remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the New York Star-Ledger on December 6th, 2024. May I ask everybody to please stand for the flag salute?
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. McGrath?
Here.
Mr. Musella?
Here.
Mr. Neglia?
Here.
Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Upcoming meetings. Oh, sorry. Also in attendance are Mayor James Barberio, Business Administrator Jamie Cryon, Municipal Attorney Michael Lavery, Municipal Clerk Colette Madden, Council President. We have a quorum, may I begin?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Upcoming meetings, January 21st, 2025, at 7:00 PM is the Regular Meeting. February 4th, 2025, at 7:00 PM is the Agenda Meeting. Ordinance is none, public session. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public session.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public, you have five minutes to speak.
Good evening, Ken Dolsky, Precipity. Matt Kavanaugh and I are gonna talk about the Climate Superfund Act. I'm asking tonight for the Town Council's support of the New Jersey Climate Superfund Act in the form of a resolution. I sent you all a package on this on December 21st, including a model resolution. I am gonna talk about the background and the benefits of the act, and Matt will talk about some of the climate costs that we're going to face. The New Jersey Legislature is considering a bill called the Climate Superfund Act that would make the largest fossil fuel corporations pay for the damages caused by climate change in New Jersey. The bill was passed by the New Jersey Senate Environmental Committee on December 12th. It now has to go to the full legislature and then be signed by the governor. Modeled after similar legislation passed in New York and Vermont, the bill applies the logic of the original Superfund Act to, which requires polluters to pay to clean up their contaminated sites, and applies that to the climate crisis. New York's version would raise up to $75 billion. It's not unreasonable to estimate that New Jersey could receive about $50 billion. I have not seen any specific numbers in terms of what New Jersey could, could, could get from this. We are requesting that the Precipity Town Council pass a resolution in support of this act in order to help offset the financial burdens of climate change on Precipity residents and businesses. Senator John McKeon, the prime sponsor of this bill, stated that passage of this bill is not assured, and that municipal resolutions would be very helpful. Participation in this effort will not involve any financial or legal risk to Precipity. I repeat, there's no financial or legal risk to the town. If this act is successful, the state will collect this money from the major climate polluters polluters and create grants for municipalities to address the costs of projects for remediation from and adaptation to climate change. So basically, we're talking about free money here. Costs to be covered include, but are not limited to, infrastructure resiliency. For example, energy efficiency and weatherization upgrades to schools and municipal buildings. Flood protection, for example, upgrades to the Rockaway River flood wall, home buyouts such as flood-prone homes in Lake Hiawatha, remediation of toxic algae blooms on Lake Parsippany, upgrades to stormwater drainage systems, well replacement of water purification due to low water levels caused by droughts, storm recovery, and more, which will mitigate climate costs in Parsippany. Any costs related to climate would be a candidate for a grant. This law will reduce the financial burdens of these events on town residents and, in some cases, may provide the only means to address these costs without tax increases or bonding. The decision to support a bill that could provide great benefits and no risk should be straightforward. However, there are people who oppose it because they are concerned that it imposes burdens on businesses and distorts market incentives. We think that companies whose products pollute and cause disease, property destruction and death, and who knowingly continue these practices should be held responsible and made to pay for these harms, not the individuals, families, and businesses who suffer because of these companies' actions. The argument for the Climate Superfund Act is the same logic the state uses to force polluters to pay for cleanups, such as the Sharkey landfill in Parsippany, under the EPA Superfund Act. It is also based on the fact that polluters knew of the problems they were causing by dumping toxins. There was clear evidence that in the 1970s Exxon recognized the climate problems that were being created by burning fossil fuels and not only refused to admit this, but spent the next 50 years obfuscating and denying the truth and impeding government responses to this crisis and are still following this game plan today. Some people have also argued that forcing fossil fuel companies to pay for their harms will cause them to increase the price of their products. This is not true. The price of oil is set by the global market based on global supply and demand. Individual companies cannot directly raise the price of their oil without losing market share. Our elected officials were voted into office to protect us, the residents and businesses in Parsippany, not global fossil fuel companies who make billions of dollars in profits every year. Exxon's global profits in '23 were $36 billion, while the total market, fossil fuel market, earned a record income of more than $2.4 trillion. Who do you think should pay for climate-based changes? Us, either directly or through increased property taxes, or the fossil fuel companies? Is your major concern burdens on the largest businesses on Earth and distorted market incentives, or on our ability to stay safe and healthy and spend our money as we see fit? We often complain about government unfunded mandates and increased local costs, but provide no source of funds. Climate-related costs are similar. They are being forced on taxpayers with no recourse. The New Jersey Climate Superfund Act attempts to correct this imbalance. We ask that you put a resolution supporting these principles up for a vote at the next meeting. I'd like to know what your thoughts are on supporting this bill with a resolution and if you have any questions.
Okay.
Hello, council members, mayor.
Hey, Matt. I may need you to speak a little bit more into the mic.
Yep.
Thank you.
Council members and mayor, this is to support the request to pass the resolution for the New Jersey Climate Superfund Act. My name is Matt Kavanaugh. Climate change is one of the most significant global challenges in the 21st century, not only impacting the environment, but also having far-reaching consequences for public health. As the planet warms, extreme weather events become more frequent and intense, ecosystems are disrupted, and water and air quality deteriorates. These environmental changes have direct and indirect effect on human health, exacerbating existing health problems and introducing new risks. Likewise, public policy officials should consider these key health impacts of climate change, the vulnerable populations most at risk, and potential strategies for mitigating these effects. The health impacts of climate change are widespread and multifaceted, ranging from heat stress and respiratory illness to the spread of infectious disease and food insecurity. Vulnerable populations such as the elderly, children, low-income communities, and indigenous peoples are at greatest risk. Addressing these challenges requires a coordinated effort to mitigate the causes of climate change and adapt health systems to cope with the consequences. By investing in sustainable practices, improving healthcare infrastructure, using subsidies and mitigation such as the Superfund, and enhancing public health strategies, it is possible to reduce the adverse effects of climate change and safeguard public health for future generations. Similar to the health impacts, climate change is one of the most pressing global challenges financially, whereby it already does have profound implications for ecosystems, human health, and economies at a high cost. The financial cost of climate change is already being felt across various sectors and are projected to escalate in the coming decades. Elected officials must be informed and understand the economic costs of climate change in terms of damage to infrastructure, impacts on industries such as agriculture, insurance claims, health-related expenses, and the costs associated with migration and adaptation efforts. New Jersey specifically is a hotspot for warming, warming twice as fast as the U.S. average, showing clear regional disparities and the long-term economic challenges that may arise if climate change is left unaddressed. The financial impacts of climate change extend beyond environmental degradation, affecting key areas of economic activity, including our town. With the increased frequency and intensity of extreme weather events, rising sea level, disruptions in agriculture, and shifting disease patterns, the world is already witnessing the economic consequences of climate change. The financial costs of climate change are already evident, and they are projected to rise dramatically in the coming decades. These costs come in the form of extreme weather events, indirect costs of health impacts, agricultural losses, and insurance liabilities, representing a profound challenge for economies and communities. While the costs of inaction are high, Parsippany can adjust, and there are substantial economic opportunities in transitioning and investing in climate resilience. Parsippany must prioritize both mitigation and adaptation strategies to avoid the worst financial consequences of climate change, ensuring long-term stability and economic security. Finally, it is worth setting the facts of the current trajectory using fossil fuels. Transitioning to sustainable and renewable resource has a cost, which is true. However, the fossil fuel industry has long received financial subsidies from governments worldwide, significantly influencing global energy markets, environmental policies, and the trajectory of renewable energy development. These subsidies can take several forms, such as direct financial aid, tax breaks, and preferential treatment and regulations. Some estimate this total is in the trillions every year. And despite growing concerns over climate change and environmental degradation, fossil fuel subsidies continue to be the cornerstone of many national and local energy policies. One must understand that fossil fuel subsidies are financial support measures provided by governments to make the production and consumption of fossil fuels more affordable. Such subsidies distort market dynamics, making fossil fuels appear affordable, encourage overconsumption, and hinder the transition to clean renewable energy sources. Fossil fuel subsidies are a global phenomenon with significant economic, environmental, and social impacts. While they provide short-term benefit in terms of energy affordability, they hinder the transition to a sustainable future. In conclusion, we want to ensure elected officials in Parsippany are aware of the financial and health consequences of inaction, the narrow window of opportunity for action, and challenge the misconception that fossil fuels are cheaper than a sustainable approach, and ask you to support a resolution for the New Jersey Climate Superfund Act. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do. Thank you for that. I think it's really important. I mean, we're not that old, but years ago, air, water, land was all polluted, and we had toxic problems with pollutants being dumped into our rivers, and we see how the Superfund cleaned that. And this is in the same vein. New Jersey alone, I think, is probably upwards of $12 billion. A couple of years ago, that was the cost of climate change to municipalities in New Jersey since Sandy, $12 billion, and that comes like unfunded mandates to municipalities like Parsippany. I just want to know what fossil fuel companies would be targeted? I mean, the local people, like the oil and gas that brings to people's homes? You know, that's the question. Who are they going to be going after?
So the bill talks about the methodology.
Ken, I need you to speak into the mic.
So the methodology outlined in the bill is that this would only apply to companies that have emitted over a billion tons, billion metric tons of greenhouse gas since 1995. And that basically means it's Exxon, Shell, BP, maybe Mobil, you know, basically four or five of those biggest oil producers in the world. This bill is not going to have any impact on local owners of gas stations or people who sell fuel oil or home fuel oil or propane or anything like that. It's only going to be those major producers that are going to have to pay.
Do we know how the money will be made available to townships?
Yeah, so if you look in the bill, the DEP and the Treasury Department are going to create a Superfund, set aside a, they're going to create a methodology of getting this money and then creating grants for municipalities and other entities, and they'll identify what the criteria would be to apply for these grants. Any cost at all that's associated with climate change, whether it's the cost to repair damages or the cost of adaptation, will be available or will probably qualify. And if the town has already set aside money for some of these things, I'm pretty sure it's, the bill doesn't say anything, but I'm pretty sure the town would be able to go and apply for a grant for that and then use money that it already set aside for something else or to save money, you know, overall. So basically, it's, I think, going to be very liberal in terms of, you know, how the money is sold out. The DEP and the Treasury Department will make those decisions.
Adaptation to New Jersey, because that's where New Jersey is going toward. That's our new regulation, so.
Right, so anything you need, any ways that you need to adapt, you know? Fixing flood walls, repairing any of your water infrastructure, anything like that will probably qualify.
Does anybody have?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. So Ken and Judy both reached out to me with some information. I thought it was incredible, right? And Ken and I had a long conversation after our last council meeting, which, by the way, it is now on the website, our water conversation.
Yay.
But it's critical that we consider the things that are going on around us. It's things that I forget about personally sometimes, such as our drought that was going on in our town. It was raining that day that we had our council meeting, and I'm like, the last thing in my mind is that there's a drought. But when you drive by the reservoir, you still see sandy beaches because we're still in the form of a drought currently. And it's one of these things that when I think about Superfund sites and I think about how things are going to happen in our world, think about the wildfires that we've had, right? From the ones in Canada that are dropping smoke on us to the ones that are just above us in Bergen County dropping smoke on us. These are things that are changes in our environments that we need to start accounting for. And as someone who's up here screaming about PFOS for the last year, thinking about pollutants and how people aren't actually addressing it, I think it is a good idea to look at this, have a conversation more with our peers up here, and talk about how Parsippany should be thinking bigger about our future. So, and again, all those things I believe are available that Ken shared include some things from Columbia University that talks about the economics. And to your point, Judy, my concern is local mom and pop, and that's not the people that we're talking about, so.
Yeah, and the unfunded mandates that we always complain about are exactly the things that we will keep having as long as we have to keep repairing, fixing, and adapting. So thank you for bringing it up.
Do you think we can get this on the agenda for the next meeting? Great. Thank you so much.
Can I have one?
Nick, come here, Lake Hiawatha. I'd also like to speak up in support of this resolution. No economic interest should ever be above the reverence for life, but we don't live by this golden rule. But implied powers of a U.S., of a living U.S. Constitution would demand corporate responsibility as a function of modern society in a democracy. We play Russian roulette with climate, and no one knows what lies in the active chamber of the gun. Tipping points have already begun. Our present political climate has chosen to disregard the precautionary principle in their responsibility to protect the public based on known and available scientific evidence. And I'm speaking about our president, who is an outright and ignorant climate denier despite the evidence. He represents a clear and present danger, not only to us but to this planet. Right now, in Paris, France, they're calling it pedestrianization because of the recent heat waves that they had in Europe due to climate change to do with the AMOC phenomena, the current phenomena that they know exist. So what they're doing is they're getting funds from corporations and from their treasury, and they're turning parking spaces into green infrastructure, they're planting more trees. So this is what a big city in Europe is doing. And climate change, believe it or not, has been known since time of Civil War. There's actually a book written, it came out in 1863 by Frederick Post Marsh, and it's the first recognized book on climate change. So it's nothing new. But to put it simply, the detriest matter that sequestered the carbon, the plants, that took the primitive atmosphere of the earth and sequestered the carbon out of the atmosphere billions and millions of years is coal, oil, gas. We're taking all that in a short period of time, a couple of hundred years, and we're throwing it back into the atmosphere. So probability alone, you wouldn't even need the science, probability alone, and by observations. In my lifetime, I'm 74 years old. I see, I see it. It's not like it used to be, and the evidence is clear. So I believe it's Vermont and New York already has it, New Jersey, and we could set an example for the rest of the state by going along with Ken and Matt has suggested to this council. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Nick. Happy New Year.
Vijay Panchamiya from Glenmont Commons. So again, it's a new year for everyone, but it hasn't started as a new year for Glenmont residents. So what happened towards the end of December and first week of January, there has been a lot of water pipe break that has happened. It has happened on town side of pipes as well. Water department has come and dug up at few places in Glenmont. And if you come and look at the shoddy job that they have done after patching it up, is really, it's an insult to our injuries, right? There are three places that has things dug up, and I request all of you to drive to Glenmont this week and go through Summer Hill Drive, around 124 Summer Hill Drive is one location, 280 Summer Hill Drive is second location, and it's about 42 or 46, Seasons Glen Drive is a third location, right? So, you know, residents are really upset because it's affecting, we have some flat tires, because the way the roads are cut, the edges are really sharp. As people go through it and sudden dips, there are tires that are, you know, popping out. There are issues with XL as well, and we have gentlemen here who have shared pictures in the email that we have, the action at Parsippany, and I'm sure, you know, mayor's office would have gotten those pictures as well. We may have some hard copies too for you to take a look, right? So we really want that to be addressed. When we were here in October, we were promised that town engineer is going to go next day, take a look at it, and take care of the patches. The first time when the patches were done, they came off in, you know, two, three months after that. Since then, it has been like that, right? So now, day by day, our conditions are only going bad, right? So the request I have for the council and the mayor is, first, we need update on the lawsuit, right? That's number one. Second, you have to decouple single-family homes from the lawsuit. We have nothing to do with homeowners association. We pay our full taxes. We need the services, because if you don't, we'll go to court as a single-family, you know, class action that we can do. We are seriously thinking about it, and that may happen if we don't see any action, right? We do want these patches that is all over the place, at least to patch it up and make it livable for us. It has been a safety concern. We are raising it. Every time, we don't want an accident to happen in our community that we all regret that, you know, we spoke about it at length here and something happened, right? You have now, you know, snowy conditions, you know, plows are coming as well. It's going to have effect on everybody, including town, you know, vehicles as well. So please, I sincerely request three updates that we need from you. One is where we stand, you know, with this issue with the lawsuit. And again, going back to water pipe issue, it's the same crew, same actors which are involved here. You have a developer who has done a shoddy job of putting water pipes, and town who has looked at other way and approving it, right? 425 homes are changing their water pipes at their own expense, right? It shouldn't be. Eight, 10 years after you purchase a new home, you have to change your water pipe. Show me any other town where people have to do like this, right? So that's a problem that is going on for last 10 years, and we may again open up that problem and create another, you know, issue for town, right? We are thinking about it, because now it's affecting all the homes. Just this week, few homes are changing their water pipe, right? So that's one. Again, same player, you have builder and town who gave up to also builder to do all this not-so, you know, up-to-standard job. So we need update on what's going on with the lawsuit. We need the patches to be done as soon as possible, and we want single-family homes to be decoupled from town homes, because we have nothing to do with HOA. We are not in any bind with HOA. We, like any other single-family homeowners, you know, deserve our roads to be maintained, right? So I'm looking for an update.
Sure. You want to give it now? All right. So the, as the town knows, well, first of all, let me give a little history, because I think there's people here that haven't been here before. I know you've been here before, but up until August of 2023, the Glenmont Homeowners Association had their filed covenants of bylaws that said that they could not dedicate those roads to the township. So it was right in their bylaw. So they, I guess, the town pointed this out to them probably two years ago, and then they went and amended them. So now they changed their bylaws in 2023, after 20 years, to say that they could dedicate the roads to the town. So the town couldn't have accepted the roads because they didn't have the authority to dedicate them. As a matter of fact, they were prohibited from dedicating them. So a bunch of, there's people that are here, some of the people that are here today urged the town to file suit against the developer, which we have done, as the council knows. We filed suit against Glenmont. Glenmont then filed an answer and a counterclaim against the homeowners association. So the homeowners association is now a defendant. The homeowners association on December 17th filed their answer and counterclaim, and they've named, they obviously said to Glenmont, the developer is responsible for the roads, and have a count in there against the town, and also have a count in there against John Does 1 through 120, which are the single-family homeowners. So, you know, exactly what I expected would happen has happened. Now, I don't think we should be discussing this in public because people watch, and I don't want to give up any of our litigation strategy, et cetera, because I think we're on the same page. We want, the township wants the roads fixed, you folks want the roads fixed, we all agree they're in deplorable condition. What I would suggest is maybe we set up a meeting with just the home, the single-family homeowners, where it's private so that we don't have to worry about other participants in the litigation being able to figure out what we're thinking or what we're looking to do, and therefore putting all of us at a disadvantage. So that would be my suggestion, is we set up a meeting with the gentlemen and ladies that are here tonight on this issue, and then we can talk more frankly. But I just don't think it's wise for me to say anything more than I've already said, and I certainly don't think it's wise for the mayor or council to make any other comment on this. I think everybody, there's no disagreement that the roads are in terrible shape, it's just a question of how do we get them fixed as soon as we can, so.
Can you just catch it up? The bonds that Paul calls in, he can't hear.
Well, that'll be something I think we should discuss in that meeting, because one of the things, one of the issues that we have, and I don't want to say any more than this, is that the more work that we do is going to be used against us to say that you own it. So let me just leave it at that, and then we can discuss that further, you know, maybe through the.
So we'll set up the meeting. Council president, would you be in that meeting?
Yes, please.
All right, so we'll set the meeting up. PJ, I'll contact you. I'll have my aide contact you.
And then, you know, whoever wants to be, you know, that way we can have a frank discussion, give you guys information that, you know, otherwise I would feel uncomfortable doing publicly because people will use that against all of us. No, you can't, I'm sorry, you can't. You can come up, you can come up if you'd like.
Maybe I want you to know when will be that.
You can't answer that. Oh, that, the mayor's office will set that up.
You want me to ask that question?
Yeah.
Happy New Year.
On his behalf.
I know the answer already, so.
Happy New Year. My name is Satish Shangalan. I also live in 69 Winter Set Drive, Glenmont. I've been there for, in the new house, or the house, single-family house, for about 11 years, and then in the community, so another three years, so 14 years. I've also been paying average, an average of $15,000 per year or more in taxes, and you add that up, and I would say 150 single-family homes, you times 15, it's $2.25 million per year. I would like to know what percentage of that goes towards the building upkeep and maintenance of the road. I want to piggyback on what PJ said. Right on December 27th, great thing that the town and the public utility commissions and the committees went and did some work there to address a water leakage, that's great, but they didn't do a good job. Right at the intersection where we have to turn, and every day, our cars are going into that, it's already depressed so bad, it deteriorated after the patch has been done. Definitely it's going to break some axle or have tire issues. I've already had tire issues in my daughter's vehicle. I'm not going to submit an expense to claim that to the town, right? I have to, there's a hairline fracture in the rim, and maybe it's discount tires, it's definitely hit a pothole. I know that. It's all through our roads, you enter the community, the intersection of Summer Hill and Seasons Glen, again, those patchwork that you guys did, really appreciate the work that was done to address the small need at that time, but it's deteriorated, it's back to its normal. So I would like to request you to come drive there and address the fixes sooner, the patchwork, while everything else is going on in the background. I appreciate all the effort that's going on in the background. But it is deteriorating our livable conditions and so on and so forth, so I'd like to, as a taxpayer, I would like to know, how can that be addressed sooner? Thank you.
I want to go with this. Thanks. I'm Sudhir Umrani from 71 Seasons Glen. I'm really living from 2004, last 20 years, paying full taxes, and living with the system, and same problem, right? Why we are getting involved, how sooner into HOA or any kind of thing where we have been paying full taxes, we have nothing to do with HOA ever, and I just don't understand why it's taken 20 years to solve this issue. And like Vijay said, that 43 Seasons Glen, that has become really a speed bump. Every morning, evening, every time I cross it, I have to brake it and go slower it, it's ridiculous, right? And not, and. And not, and of course, all those patches have coming off, we are literally driving middle of the road. And that's not the way we should be driving to avoid the patch, the pothole. So I guess you really guys have to step up. I came few times and we every time hear something other being going forward, but we don't see any resolution. I think we all know we get counted by results we deliver, right? In our life, in corporate world, even at home. And I really expect same thing from the township, which should have upper hand with the builder, rather than builder having upper hand and suing the township, which is so strange and in fact ridiculous for me. Thank you so much.
Hi, Janice McCarthy. Um, I just wanna support what Matt and Ken spoke about tonight as chair of the environmental committee and an advisory committee to the council. I would strongly recommend that you review this and make a commitment because I think it's very important for the future of Parsippany, for the future, here again. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor. Uh, good evening, all the council members. Again, uh, I'm part of Glenmont community. I live in a single-family home. It's again the same issue. I'm coming here from last two years. We are keep repeating the same issue, hoping you would take quick action on it. Uh, but things are moving extremely slow. We are extremely disappointed, but at least from now, from this year, twenty twenty-five onwards, we want some quick action on this issue. So that, I mean, we have almost five hundred houses, okay? It's not one or two, okay? So like, I mean, people now, like the mayor election will come soon this year. So people are taking in a different angle, okay? Political angle as well as any angle however you want to consider it, okay? They are doing door-to-door campaigning, okay? I would recommend to take this as a top priority, work on it and resolve the road issues. Uh, this is happening from long time. Uh, and as Vijay mentioned, everyone mentioned, single-family has no connection with the, uh, homeowners association. So please keep it aside and at least take that as a first priority and fix the road. And then like as per the single-family home blueprint, uh, plan, there was supposed to be a separate road to enter the single-family home. That never happened, and township like approved everything and now like, okay, there's no way for single-family to have a separate path. So appreciate you can look at all the drawbacks, what happened, and the builder is still there in this township. I mean, he committed, I, I would call it as a crime, I mean, for four hundred plus houses. Okay, no action was taken against the builder. Okay, and he is still constructing a lot of houses in this township. So some serious action has to be taken so that in future, any builder who construct any houses, okay, they know that they have to follow proper rules, regulations, and then they do have, they should do a proper handover to the township. In that way, there is proper structured laws is followed by every person. So please, I request everyone, make sure that please take action against the issue what has happened so far. Thank you. Uh, just a little, uh, mayor, uh, you mentioned that there will be a meeting, so we would like to know when that meeting will be happening?
Well, the, the mayor will schedule, I work for the mayor, so his, his office will schedule that. I can't, I don't.
I'm gonna schedule it, Vijay.
Yeah.
My name is Bob Venedzia, and I live in Parsippany. And I have a little different point of view from some of what you've already heard here. The council should not approve any resolution that supports the proposed state bill that would make the largest fossil fuel corporations pay for climate change in New Jersey. In my opinion, this bill is just a money grab by the state to help balance a fiscally unsound budget. If passed, the bill would also amount to a backdoor tax on New Jersey residents since the energy companies will simply pass along the cost of the assessment to the public. Energy companies produce products that the public demands. For example, twenty-eight percent of total carbon emissions are produced by tran, the transportation section, sector, and another twenty-five percent by the electric power sector. I don't know many people that are willing to give up their gasoline-powered automobiles or their uses of electricity, I know I'm not. Energy companies cannot be blamed for how the public uses their products or if they're not using their products responsibly or efficiently. In fact, people in New Jersey and in the United States in general are among the most responsible and most efficient users of energy in the world and are at least, are the least deserving of having to pay for climate change. Since nineteen ninety-two, and I chose that year because it was the base year for the Kyoto Climate Change Agreement, world carbon emissions have increased by sixty-one percent. While at the same time, the increase from China during that same period is a staggering three hundred and ninety-six percent. Meanwhile, the increase in US carbon emissions since nineteen ninety-two is zero. It's zero. Unless the legislators, legislators in New Jersey can control energy usage in other countries and specifically China, which obviously they cannot, then the bill will generate tax revenue but will have an insignificant effect on the global carbon emissions problem. Thank you.
Good evening, all. Um, I have a question. Pardon my broken hand. Um, I was so glad to see that the city has been included in that, uh, pilot, uh, traffic study that the DOT is doing to help people crossing the crosswalks on Route forty-six. Do we have any idea when that's going to be put in place? Because it, it said that they were working on it, but there was no timeframe, if you will. Um, another thing, um, is the city capable of piggybacking on state contracts for the purchase of, of vehicles? I know we used to, we, the state entity that I work for, used to purchase vehicles, and we got deep, deep discounts. I know there was a big discussion about vehicles that we've just purchased and what the cost was and this, that, and the other thing. But I can tell you, we used to save thirty-five percent on, you know, vehicles. And, you know, all you gotta do is buy what's on that, you know, state purchasing list. And it would save you a lot of money. Um, I recognize that the city and the PAL, are they hand in glove or are they two separate entities? Because I'm really not sure. The only reason why I bring it up is, um, last December, excuse me, December twenty twenty-three, we had a town council meeting there, and a lot of people entered and exited via the emergency stairwell at the back of the building. At the time, I noticed that a lot of the stair treads were rotting. I, I looked at it again recently, and eight out of the eleven stair treads have rot holes in, in, in them, some bigger than others. But you would think that, you know, to prevent the possible lawsuit, this may be an issue that someone may want to look at and someone may want to get fixed before we wound up paying big money for something that can be avoided by some good maintenance. As far as these poor people, I really feel sorry for them because I hear them all the time. They have a legitimate gripe. And I recognize that the city doesn't want to do too, too much because once you take a couple of bites of the apple, then it's your, your apple. But with that said, seeing as it's a life safety issue, couldn't the city put down some temporary, uh, road plates just to cover the worst of, of the potholes where these people aren't damaging their, their cars? And I recognize those road plates can be a pain in the butt when they're plowing snow. But you, you know, you, you could feather that, that, that out with a little bit of asphalt so that they're not sticking up, you know, the, the thickness of, of the road plate. And I, I think it's just to show that we're, that we're trying to do, do something, but yet we're not making a, a permanent fix. We're just doing it because the contractor isn't doing what in fact he should have, have done when the houses were, were built. And that being a good job, which apparently they didn't. Um, I saw in the newspaper, there was a donut plant, and God bless them, you can never have enough donuts. But there's a donut plant that just opened in, in Rockaway. They're gonna make a million donuts a day. God bless them.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Were, were we not in on that? I, 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 I mean, did, did, did we even, did we even approach this company and say, hey, we have space here in, in, in Parsippany? Build it here. Don't build it in, 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 in Rockaway. It would have been a nice tax for, for the city to, you know, tap into. And one last thing, um, on November twelfth, Mr. Mayor, you said that we, and by we, I thought you meant city, own some properties and we'll see if there's a suitable location for the Lake Hiawatha Library. Then on December seventeenth, you said, we don't have a, a site for the Lake Hiawatha Library. So I'm just wondering, we're on, on November twelfth, were, were you talking about city-owned property or private property that the city was thinking about purchasing? Because I don't know which.
I'll answer that real quick. We, we can't touch private property. Only property I would be talking about is township-owned property.
Oh, okay, so.
Where we can't have back and forth.
Oh, okay, so it's property that, that the town owns.
Hello, everybody. Punit Agarwal from Glenmont Commons. Uh, sir, thank you for adding your voice to our cause. I sincerely appreciate and heartfelt gratitude. Uh, and also in regard to the donuts, we have a space in Glenmont which is going wasted, so we should be able to put a donut, uh, factory there. Uh, more importantly, the two things that I would like is, in addition to Vijay's three points, uh, the another point is the intersection between Mountain Way and Old Overload. When we last met in December, if I remember, an engineer was sent to have the report done on that intersection because that is very dangerous. There are no stop sign, the yellow line is not there. The road conditions are deteriorated. So just seeking an update as to what happened from that engineer's report and what is the next plan of action in repairing that part of the portion which connects to the denwell. So that's one. And second thing is, is, um, to your point, August twenty twenty-three, can we get a copy of the document of the transfer of the roads from the HOA to the township? Those are the two things that I.
So are your questions?
Those were the two things, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, I'm sorry. Uh, the, the roads are never transferred to the township.
That's what I was just gonna say. Yeah, the roads were never, they, they had to amend it. In August of twenty twenty-three, they amended their bylaws to take out that prohibition because it said, like I said, for whatever reason, and, and, and believe me, it's odd because I've never seen that in any other, uh, bylaws before, but they put in there that they could. So in August of twenty twenty-three, the homeowners association amended that to take that out so that they would be in it because before that, they were prohibited from it. And then on the, I think after the last, that meeting that we discussed that, I think there's work that's scheduled to be done on that road. Um, but I don't remember off the, I, I'll have to check with the engineer. I forget, I remember talking about it after the meeting and we had the map and, and there was a resolution on that I think Councilman McGrath asked me, hey, we got this resolution, is that gonna address the problem? My recollection is that work is to be done, but I'm not certain. So I want to just, I'll check with the engineer and we'll get back to it. And, and, you know, by the time we have our meeting, you know, hopefully that'll be quickly, we'll have an update on that.
Yep.
And again, look, I, I understand everybody's complaints. Remember one thing, though. If the town, the estimate, estimate to fix those roads is four point eight million dollars. So we've got litigation against the developer who was responsible to fix those roads. So why should you as taxpayers join in? Because that four point eight million is coming out of the township. Why should you have to pay that as well? It should be the developer that pays that. And, and, and listen, I don't control the speed of litigation, unfortunately. I wish I did, but, you know, the complaint's filed, there's a bunch of, there's multiple parties in it now, and hopefully it gets resolved soon. But I can explain more when we meet.
Good evening, everybody. Deman Sherno from Glenmont Commons. Once again, this is my probably seventeenth or eighteenth, uh, visit. Uh, beginning, beginning from twenty twenty-four until now, actually. And prior to that, since two thousand sixteen, I moved in Glenmont Commons. Countless visits regarding the condition of the roads. The mayor had won the election, probably this would be the third term, and in between Soriano, we had the same issue of deteriorated road condition and the part promised and the vacant land. We understand now, actually, in this meeting, that there'll be a separate meeting to discuss the issue about single-family homeowners, uh, problem with the roads. It's great, actually. That meeting needs to set up, actually. But my hope in twenty twenty-five to have this problem rectified once and for all. I'm pleading, mayor. Okay, we're not trying to politicize this Glenmont Commons issue. We don't want to be a burden to any taxpayers in the township. We pay our fair share of taxes and we just deserve better. That's all we want, basically. That is all we want. We need our kids to be safer. We need our seniors to be safer. We need less impact on our private vehicles. We need accountability on these developers. We need accountability on the, the utility work that's being done in our township that's unaccounted for, really, really tardy work that's being done. When we have broken pipes fixed and even two feet of road that's damaged, the city comes in and tells us, make sure you have asphalt rolled. Okay? If you do not do that, you get five hundred dollar fine per week until you fix it. Why can't the same thing happen to these work that's being done? Okay? Literally, a minivan was rolled over to roll asphalt. I mean, that's a shame. Okay? That's a patch of twenty feet by forty feet, actually, and minivan is getting rolled over to patch blacktop. I mean, it's a shameful. Where are these inspectors from the city? All right? They come in to check the code for construction in private homes, uh, basement and all of that, but they don't check these things? Why do they get away from this? Why can't we look at this, these things? All right? Let's just improve township, Parsippany township. Let's do some better job, okay? Go after these people who are just failing to do their jobs. And we are here to account for you guys, okay? You want our votes? We deserve better after voting for you. To bring you here, let's do better for us. After voting for you, to bring you here, let's do better for us, improve our community, okay? We also request, until this whole issue gets sorted out, tax abatement for single-family homeowners. I have nothing to do with a HOA issue. I'm being told it's HOA that's holding up. I don't care. I'm paying my full tax. I need tax abatement. All 150 homeowners request tax abatement until you resolve the issue. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amit, this Amit, this Amit Mangala. I'm just also the single-family homeowner at, you know, 107 Seasons Glen Drive. I would just like to add one more point to what everything has been said is that if you actually look at the homes, there are actually a lot of, you know, small kids out there which just, you know, actually ride the bikes around the whole of the Seasons Glen Drive. And now with this, with this, you know, patchwork, it's a big, big, you know, safety risk for them once we have spring and once we have, you know, summer. So my just, you know, my humble, you know, request is to at least do the patchwork right, to actually make the roads, I mean, if it takes time to do the whole road again, that is, I mean, not to you guys, but to at least, you know, repair it so that, you know, at least, you know, the kids can actually play around. They can move around. They can just ride their bikes around. Because if they have a big patch there, which is almost, has gone, has been actually, you know, this, you know, depressed, they just, you know, fall off the bike. And if that actually, this, you know, helmet comes off, they have a serious head injury out there. So please, please, we should not wait for that accident to, you know, happen, and then we all regret that, you know, we should have acted sooner on this. So if we can actually repair the roads first without doing the full, because, you know, full blown job, that would be really a issue. Please. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Samantha Rath, and hello, Mr. Mayor. Wish you happiness here and members of the council. I think I've also shown support with our team members. We've talked before. I won't go elaborating the same thing all over again, but just, you know, to make a point that, you know, I've been here since like 2004 in the community. This has gotten worse and worse. First, it started off with somebody brought about the pipelines. You know, they start telling you the Volca Code and the State Code and all that. So we've got nothing to do with it. The township needs to do a better job looking at all of this. And if it was not fixed, they own the responsibility. I myself paid about $10,000 and fixed my pipelines. Nothing happened. They said that, okay, you can go with a lawsuit, and so we ignored that. All of us paid for it. Now, it's come to the second time that the roads are really bad and deplorable. It's just going from bad to worse. Seems like we're kicking the can down the road. I really appreciate you, you know, mentioning that, you know, we'll have a discussion. And hopefully, we bring a resolution to this and really solve it once and for all and hold the builder accountable and not pass buck to us. Thank you very much.
I'm Raviv Avdala. Happy New Year, Councilman. Happy New Year, Attorney. Happy New Year, Club. And Happy New Year, Mayor. I'm also part of the Glenmont Commons, and I would like to express my gratitude to Vijay and all for bringing up this again and again. My point here is, for the last 20-plus years, we have at least paid about $300 million. If you take about 2% of it, that should cover for it, the repaving entire roads in the Glenmont Commons. So it's that simple. Usually, it's all about money. So we have paid enough taxes to pay a small percentage of it. Could be potentially utilized and pave the roads for us. That's all I'm requesting. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'd like the council to quickly review the consent agenda to be voted on at the next meeting. Quickly review the approval of minutes. Seeing that there are no questions, we're going to move on to presentations and reports. Mayor?
Thank you. Go ahead. First, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the residents of Glenmont Commons for coming up here today. Vijay, I'll be in touch with you. With that, I do want to talk about, not talk about it and elaborate on it, is that New Jersey Superfund Site Resolution. My recommendation is to send this to the League of Municipalities for their opinion. I think that's important because that, the League of Municipalities is a body of Democrats and Republicans, and they usually will come back with an opinion if it's advantageous or not advantageous for a town. So I'm going to have the BA send it down to the League for their opinion. It is great enthusiasm, and I stand here today to welcome, we had three remarkable individuals into our, so I saw in three remarkable individuals into our police department, Cadet Vincent Calatoni, Cadet Steven Kratsis, and Cadet Cyan Patel. These dedicated officers will be starting within the next few weeks at the academy. As your mayor, I made a commitment to bolster public safety and to ensure that our police force is equipped to effectively address the challenges we face. I'm proud to say that we are fulfilling that promise. The addition of Cadets Calatoni, Kratsis, and Patel not only strengthened our department, but also enhanced our ability to foster safe and secure environments throughout our township. Also, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank, on December 26th, we had the menorah lighting. With me present was Council Vice President Frank Neglia and Councilwoman Judy Hernandez. A special thank you to Rabbi Baumgartner of Shavad Center, Rabbi Rudin of Doshalom, and Rabbi Lubin of Shaya of Atorah for making this night rememberable. It was actually a very nice night, and the illumination and the spirit of positiveness was there that day. Affordable housing, as everybody knows, the affordable housing obligation that is mandated by courts was challenged by several towns, and Parsippany was one of them, and it was shot down by the courts. There most likely will be an appeal, but in the meantime, the township will move forward to meeting the requirements of what the courts have requested. I don't think it would be advantageous for us to not meet those requirements and possibly lose our immunity, which is something we don't want to do because that puts all the power into the developer's hands from that point on. So it's actually, it's a pretty short, what do you call it, report. I do want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, but I do want to say this. I got a message sent to me today, and it was kind of funny, and I want to read it to you. Drones, just like that, they're gone. You don't see them anymore. There was a lot of political maneuvering over these drones, and when I think back to it, they don't exist anymore. All of a sudden, they're gone. I haven't seen one in the sky, I can't tell you in how long since, I guess, since we talked about it at the last meeting. And a lot of us mayors are saying, where did they go? So it makes you kind of skeptical. Maybe we should investigate where they went. But that being said, I know there was a lot of uproar in the township. People were nervous and scared and stuff like that. And, you know, as a mayor, I try not to do things like that to, you know, of course, you want to make the residents aware, but the last thing I want to do is scare them into thinking that these drones were going to, you know, come down and invade us like War of the Worlds. That's not what was happening. They're gone. And it just kind of boggles my mind that nobody's even talking about them anymore. Everybody got their time on the radio. Everybody got their time on CNN or News Nation. But still, we have no answers to where the drones went. We didn't even have an answer where they came from. So, and if the FBI, like I said in the last meeting, doesn't know, how on earth are we going to know? And I have spoken to the sheriff on several occasions about the drones, and he didn't even know, the sheriff. And I know if he did know, he would let us know, but the same thing, contact the FBI. Call the state up. Contact the FBI. Well, we contacted the FBI, and as you know, try to stay on the call with the FBI. They don't get back to you right away because they have other things that they're doing as well. So that being said, I'd like to wish everybody a really, really healthy, happy, Happy New Year. So thank you.
Councilman Council?
Yep, so just comment about economic development. Economic Development alongside Mayor James Barbario are going to welcome the following businesses to Parsippany with ribbon cuttings this month. Homewood Suites at 71 Interpace Parkway on Saturday, January 11th at 12 o'clock noon. MRA Tax Services at 14 Walsh Drive on Friday, January 24th at 11:00 a.m. And we're proud to honor Dr. Rauschberg's incredible 60-year journey of service and dedication. Please join us for a special ribbon-cutting ceremony to commemorate his remarkable milestone. The event will take place on Saturday, January 25th at 1 o'clock at 199 Baldwin Road. And we talked a lot last year and saw a lot of success. And the Economic Development Committee is excited to announce the continuation of the grant opportunities through 2025. These are aimed at supporting local businesses with critical funding. Eligible businesses may qualify for grants ranging from $5,000 to $50,000 to reimburse costs associated with interior and exterior enhancements, as well as the purchase and installation of furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And last year, it was around $1.3 million that the Economic Development Team helped businesses get funding for. So again, great opportunity. If you are looking to start a business here in Parsippany, great opportunity to go and find funding sources. And then the next meeting of Economic Development is on Thursday, January 16th at 6:30, 90 East Halsey Road, third-floor conference room. Public is invited. Please are a SVP with Chairman Frank Cahill at 973-559-6000. Thank you.
I'll go. So, you know, I had the opportunity, excuse me, the Qantas Club of Parsippany had the opportunity to have their Christmas party at the Stickley Museum, and we had the opportunity to tour the recently reopened Annex. I would encourage all residents to go. It's a, you know, great historical asset. It's been reopened. And I think it really, they did a great job with the historical contractor rehabilitating that site to its, you know, former glory. I did bring up at the last council meeting about a company that can help us monetize vacant municipal lot space for EV charging. It's essentially a win-win. If we're not using the space, they can essentially at no cost allow us to, they can do an estimate to see how we can monetize the spaces. So I said I'd be happy to, it's a free estimate. I was going to run it by the administration to see if they would be interested. I did email Business Administrator Cryin', so I'll forward that when I get that. I've had a few residents reach out to me about speeding on Mount Tabor. So BA Cryin', if maybe we can step up patrols there, that would go a long way with the residents there. And lastly, I just want to thank all the residents and everybody that reached out, you know, in between last council meeting and this meeting. My wife and I had our baby Noah, and I, you know, everybody was just so generous with giving us food and blankets. Somebody even got a gift tonight. Thank you, Councilwoman Hernandez. It, you know, just really generous. You know, our story didn't begin in Parsippany. But, you know, as we build our life here, I just want to thank everybody from the bottom of our hearts for their generosity and helping me get through a period of time where I'm not getting much sleep right now, so.
We're going to lose a lot of hair over the course of time as well.
That could be true. That might be coming. So, thank you.
Any other member from council? Okay. Councilman Paterno?
No report this evening, Council President.
Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council and Mayor. I just wanted to briefly say thank you to the residents. 2024 was an incredible year. Accomplished a lot of things. '25 is going to be just as fruitful, I believe. And it's great that we have the same council as we did in '24 because they know the issues. There's no ramp-up time. There's a lot to do. There's been affordable housing numbers coming at the end of the month, and cannabis being finalized, and the budget happening pretty soon. There's just a lot going on right now. And I look forward to working with you. And one real quick thing, there was a couple of items on your agenda for change orders. Councilmember Musella had asked for some clarification on them. I sent it to each of the council members. An explanation basically change order is because there's been a change in the scope of the accepted proposals that were bid out. One of the things that our new QPA is doing is making sure that we're very compliant. So five of the change orders were approved prior to her coming here, but she wants to make sure that these things are done the way that they're supposed to be done, not the way that they were done in the past. So that's one of the big things. And also, there's, we did the resolution again for our CFO. Last meeting, or a few meetings ago, we did a resolution for the unfinished term, the expirer term. Now, January 1 starts a new four-year term for the CFO. So that's the reason why that may seem like a repeat. But that's all I have.
BA Cryin', I just wanted, I know you're busy, I just wanted to follow up on, I had reached out about when the judge, appellate judge issued a stay on the affordable housing lawsuit. Any, you know, guidance on where the towns that have come together, you know, what we plan to do?
Well, yes. Mike Labor can go into more detail about that. But we are appealing it, right, Mike? They're appealing it, and we've successfully been allowed to appeal it. After, you know, Mike can talk about the specifics of this, but the main thing is that, as Mayor said earlier, the township is, you know, looking at this from a two-pronged approach. It's not, you know, putting all of our eggs in the one basket of trying to win this in the courts. We're still moving on. We're trying to get our numbers solidified. And as a matter of fact, we have a meeting tomorrow with our redevelopment council and our affordable housing planner to make sure that we're getting our numbers correct and ready for submission by the end of the month.
Yeah, so the judge denied the order to show cause that was filed. Our attorneys filed an emergent appeal, which was granted because you can't just file. They have to agree to hear it, and so that was granted. So I don't know that we have the date on that yet, but as soon as we get it, we'll provide it to council, and then, you know, we'll see what happens. So it's an emergent appeal. What the courts are going to do is, your guess is as good as mine, so.
And the issue is that we have to have our numbers in by the 31st.
Have no report. Anything for the Township Offices Committees? Nothing. Okay, moving along. Non-consent agenda. R2025-27 authorizing the purchase of Darktrace cybersecurity software for the Parsippany Police Department. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Make a motion.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
For me, yeah. I knew how you were going to vote.
R2025-28 authorizing the purchase of Darktrace SaaS module renewal. Motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by what, Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Okay, barely heard you there, buddy. Roll call. Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
There you go. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving along to approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Angelica Sabatini recommends authorization for payment. Number one, authorizes payment of the January 3, 2025 regular miscellaneous payroll estimated at $1,650,000. Can I please have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. May I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
I was real quick on that one, huh? Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella. Yeah, Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Have a great night, everyone. We're adjourned.
All right, one down and 24 to go.